Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Fairfield Township Butler County Community Improvement Corporation Quarterly Meeting. It's Tuesday, September ninth, 2025 at seven P. M. Could I have a roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Groynes.
Here.
Ms. Schultz here, Mr. Birding.
President.
Mrs. Harkemeyer. Mr. McAbby. Mr. Phil Pot. Mr. Statzer.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Fairfield Township resident, Ms. Elena. She's a first grader and she's going to stand and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So we could all rise. Thank you, Elena. Appreciate that. I heard you're learning about local government and schools. So thanks for joining us today. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the CIC minutes from June seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
To move.
Roll. Yes.
Mrs. Schultz, yes, Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer. Mr. McAbby. Mr. Phil Pot.
I wanted to bring a brief update to the board. Since we only meet quarterly, Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton, they are hoping to break ground on one of the lots that the CIC and Township donated to them. On the first lot that they're looking to develop on is two zero four one Milton Street, which is just down the street from the new Pocket Park on Milton. They are also working on a replat of the three lots across the street located at two zero three eight Milton Street and plan to submit some plans for that early next year. Also, I just wanted to bring up kind of the point that we do have a decent, a fairly decent inventory of lots. And some of our partners are kind of only taking a few here and a few there. And I wanted to kind of see what the, the board thought about potentially looking into a side lot program. So this would just be an alternative way to reduce our liability and maintenance requirements for the lots that are held by the CIC and the township. The intent of these programs are, as mentioned, to reduce the number of lots township has, to return these lots to private ownership for purposes of tax revenue and to encourage existing property owners for either expansion of their structures or just, you know, utilization of larger yard. If the, if the board's interested in this, I could put together an outline of a program and include eligibility requirements, transfer processes, and also put together just an updated property inventory list. Is this something board would be interested in? Great. Okay.
Yeah, I think if they're just sitting empty, it'd be better if we could turn them back into residential units.
Yeah, okay. And some of the lots that we are, we still have aren't really suitable for development on them. The topography is challenging and they're very narrow lots. So there's a number of them that would be, you know, low hanging fruit to get rid of in that, within that program. So at the next CIC meeting, I'll provide some documentation and updates on that. Other than that, I don't think there, does the board have any comments?
Do we have anybody sign up for public comments for the CIC?
All right, well, I will move to adjourn CIC meeting unless there's any other items.
Mr. Groynes.
Wait, did you make?
I, I'll move. You want a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Groynes.
Yes.
Ms. Schultz, yes, Mr. Birding.
Yes.
Mrs. Harkemeyer. Mr. McAbby. Mr. Phil Pot.
Yes.
Adjourned at seven oh four.
Good evening. Today is still Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty five at seven oh six P. M. I now call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees Meeting to border. Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Present.
Trustee Harkemeyer. Trustee McAbby.
Okay, since we already had the pledge, we will move right into presentations. Ms. LePensey.
So tonight we have Miami University here with us tonight. So I'm going to introduce Sammy Groyles and you can introduce your team if you want to go through your presentation for the president.
Good evening, trustees. So I myself, I am the Regional Director of Community Alumni Engagement. And with me, I have my colleague, Yvette Kelly Fields. She is our Director of Development. And then we also have our Dean, also Fairfield Township resident, Laura Casey, with us. And here just to answer any questions after we go through the presentation with me and Yvette. So starting off with this presentation, what we wanted to present to the township today, kind of setting the framework, is an opportunity for your most disenfranchised. I know the township's very well off and there are a few pockets that do need extra help. And we want to talk about a college promise today. If you've heard about it maybe in the past, we were able to successfully do this in partnership with the City of Hamilton, the City of Miltown. And we've seen the effect of it with kids and we did some numbers and deep dive and we'll get to that to see that it actually could be possible here. We found some matching dollars and that's just kind of setting the landscape here. And what we look at it is, is the ecosystem. And what we try to do is specialize in an ecosystem that helps students figure out pathways with zero debt. As we know, higher education, they just talk about the cost and we are thankful to have our regional campus here and we're in partnership with Butler Tech, which is right here in backyard. I was just at an event today. And what we see is that kids are definitely being burdened by the cost of education and there's been a high attack on it. And what we want to do is figure out how we partner with K-12 community like yourself, workforce partners, and also higher education to help create these pathways. You can go to the next slide, please. Sorry about sounding stuffy. I was fighting my eight year old, he has a little cold, eighteen month old. And this proposal, what it is, we're talking about is the Miami Fairfield Township Promise. It provides a two-year or a four-year option for a student who is Pell Grant eligible, that is also a resident of Fairfield Township and they can attend Miami University. And, and one of, one of the reasons for this is one, increase access. We know, as many know, that education has been a great equalizer. It helps a lot of people be able to jump that class structure and be able to move up in society. And it helps with economic development. If you look at college education rates in certain, certain cities and districts, and you could directly correlate that to health outcomes, K-12 readiness, and I'll get to some of that too as well. And what we're asking is for Fairfield Township to help partner with us. We put money in, the Fairfield Community Foundation is interested in putting money in and matching funds and doing a three-way partnership to help sponsor kids with tuition costs and fees that attend any Fairfield High School. So that includes Butler Tech, but wherever they are situated in the township and how, what school they, they attend. And this is need last dollar, so it's not first dollars, this is before. This is the last dollars, all scholarship barry went out, all Pell Grant money went out. It's not first dollar where they get extra, it's just to help them cover the fees. That makes sense? Thank you, next slide, please. So why it makes sense for us is we looked at the Fairfield Community Foundation and we, we really think that align, there is alignment with the mission statements and the vision for each of these entities and organizations. And we all want to strengthen our, our quality of life for our citizens in the greater Fairfield area. And that's what the Fairfield Community Foundation talks about. But also, we want to provide a higher quality of life for residents and high functioning of safety services and also control economic development, well, well-maintained infrastructure and fiscal responsibility and transparent government operations is what I was able to find online with the Fairfield Township. And then the community of families that blends the urban atmosphere also with the suburban convenience. And that spoke volumes to me as I was looking and actually researching a little bit more about the township and learning about it, that we do have a few pockets of, you know, some trailer homes. And I know the, I call it the knob, but that area also as well kind of overlaps in there. And there are some pockets where we can help some communities and families also live the lifestyle of some of our more affluent neighborhoods in the township. And then, of course, Miami University is all about empowering minds and strengthening our communities. And they say the boat rises when the low, low tide rises. So we want to try to help those in the lower areas rise also as well. Next slide, please. So what we do, and I won't bore you too much with these details, but it just kind of reinforces that we want to remove those financial barriers. That's the whole purpose of this. We want to try to provide access and, and help kids see a pathway forward. Sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And oftentimes, when I work with young people and I see the light bulb go on, it's only been inside the four walls of this room hypothetically, and they don't know opportunities that's out there for them. So we trying to, we're trying to help expose them to opportunities that they can achieve. And with our new polytech transition on our campus, it's going to be high demand, experiential learning, jobs. And, and it's phenomenal work that they will have access to instantly coming out either, either, either if it's a two-year degree or just a certification that they need to get just to go into manufacturing, or they can go into a four-year program like our nursing. There's so many, you have a lot of different options for them and a lot of different onramps. So that kid coming out of high school, they can figure out, how can I make a healthy living and healthy lifestyle? And then, of course, it's helped to increase college going rates that are pretty high already in the area comparatively to other partners. But we always strive for better, always look at myself and try to get better than I was yesterday. Next slide, please. This will be my last slide before you hear my colleague Yvette. But this is why it makes sense for economic development. When we talk about this promise program, that was what we thought about and what bucket this falls into with any city or township, is that it's economic development. If we don't train up our ones who are the most vulnerable and at risk, then they can, unfortunately, the crime rates go up in those areas for these, these people who do not get these kind of advanced either certifications or degrees. And then it also helps build up workforce as you guys are tracking more and more business in this area. And then we also think about economic growth as far as tactical income. As these individuals be, have the chance to be able to get high, high-paying jobs and also move back and afford living here, they're going to be taxpayers, they're going to be spending at rich waterfalls. And also, there'd be a rise in property value as more homeownership goes up. I remember the fight of homeownership with me and my wife were looking about in two thousand seventeen. I had got down, bid it like three times at Fairfield Township. So it's a very high sought-after area. It was a fight for real and me and my wife like, we want it right away. And then, you know, you know how it goes. That was the height of the craze of the housing market. But what we, what we do understand, crime rates are significantly low in this area. But they, and, and it's, it's really due to just the wonderful ran township that you guys have. And it affects also the personal health of the community with the kids. You have longer lifespans when you have college going rates. You also have average ten years more life and then kindergarten readiness, which is so critical when you're looking at outcomes. When kids are coming in with parents who are educated, they can, the things they're learning is naturally at home. Helps prepare them for the school district, which then makes school district stronger, which helps the community and also overall real estate market. So that's kind of how it all falls back into play, why this is economic development. And the quality of job too as well that, you know, I give an example of someone I know that did very well. They're at corporate Krogers and they only have a high school diploma. They've been there for ten years and they had the opportunity to move up to be a supervisor within their health side for the Kroger Health Network. But they're, they are now at a glass ceiling where they can't move up no more because they don't have that bachelor degree. So even though they were able to grow and move, it also helps access a better career and jobs and paying higher paying jobs. So that's just the spirit right there. If you guys have any questions, I could come and answer and then I'll let my friend, Yvette, finish up.
Thanks, Sammy. Thank you, Sammy. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to come and present to you. Only a couple more slides, so next please. Thank you, Vanna. Next please. So one of the things that we saw is Sammy was sharing, is that we see this as opportunity. Even if you look across your own landscape, the one thing we have found when we've done a similar project in Miltown and Hamilton, is that we had other families from surrounding areas saying, well, what about our area? What about our young people? Because we have a need to, whether you can see it in our demographics or not, does not mean that we don't have, have a need and would like the opportunity to present something to all of our families, where if there's a young person who wants to pursue a college degree that they can and they don't feel the burden of that cost. We recognize that people can go into any field. There's definitely a great field with technical skills, but there are students who's like, I want to pursue a college degree, but the barriers and costs keep me from doing that. By being able to provide this to students that don't have to be the three point five high achieving student. I'm not sure about you, but if it required me to have a three point five to get a scholarship when I was going through college, I would not have been able to go. I, I made it through high school and I was glad to graduate. So we worked with this promise program not to necessarily pinpoint those high achieving four point O students who'll get those big merit scholarships that'll pay for everything. And usually they'll have to go somewhere else like Ohio State or somewhere else. We designed this before the average student who has an ambition in their spirit to want more, even if sometimes their grades don't always reflect it. So we created this to be a requirement that would be for Fairfield Township residents. That means their address is in Fairfield Township, that they go to the school from grades nine through twelve. So this is not where somebody could have been living somewhere else and they hear about this and they move in the twelfth grade year and say, I heard you all allow students who go to Fairfield High, go to the school here, I live in Fairfield Township, get this free degree. It's like, no, you have to been through nine through twelve, two point five GPA. Now, some people might say, well, why not a three point O GPA? Because we have found that students with two point high, two point five high school GPA can come into our program and over time can rise to a three point O. But we did not want to lock them out because they did not achieve that in high school. Plus, it also fits with our Pell Grant eligibility, which the student has to be Pell Grant eligible to be able to receive these funds. Also, those students don't just get funding, they get help through wraparound services. We recognize that two reasons that we have young people who drop out of college. One, which is the greatest one, financial need. Between five hundred to a thousand dollars is the average need that a student will hit. And if they cannot find that thousand dollars, they drop out of school. Sometimes they go back, sometimes they don't. I'm not sure if you all have people that you know, maybe it was yourself, that you thought about going to college or you went to college and you're just like, if I just need another five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, I have to work a second job. Our goal is to have students be able to go to college and not to have that worry in the back of their mind. Also, we want to be able to make sure that if they're having the other thing that causes them to drop out, problems at home. I don't have transportation, we lack food, I have family issues. I'm not getting all the, I don't understand all the work being put in front of me. We have full things like our trio program, as well as the opportunity that if they take any college courses while in high school, those transfer in. We look for all the ways to make sure a student is successful. So if every part of your mind is like, well, if they start, can they finish? We are seeing success with these wraparound services that our students start and finish. So there's not a waste of money in investing in this because the students do go through and the students stay in the area. So it's also an attraction and attention tool for your own community that you can grow your own talent. The goal is for this to start for fall twenty twenty six, where we would have students come in. You can go to the next slide because I want to talk about the number of students. For fall twenty twenty six, where we would like to see about seven or so actually benefit from this scholarship. Right now, we have about twenty-six Pell eligible students that, is that for apply or? That apply. So we already have students from your community that apply, about twenty-six. We would love to be able to make sure that at least seven of those students are able to have their full tuition cover. And the way that will work is a Pell Grant eligible, eligible student, our tuition is about seventy thou, seven thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Pell Grant eligibility may provide them for up to thirty-five hundred dollars towards their tuition. This promise scholarship would cover the rest of that. So this is not you first in, this is you last in. And what we're seeing in our other communities is that those students also usually have other aid that comes into play. So even your part that covers could be as little as five hundred to a thousand dollars, which is that number that usually students just don't have. And many students can get a lot of money sometimes that first year of college because of different things like the Kiwanis Club and Rotary that likes to give out five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars. Then year two, that money is not there. And that's when you start to really see the struggle for a student. This would make sure that they're covered all those years. And by participating, you'll have that opportunity to about at least a twenty-five percent or more of your students who already are coming to Miami University be able to be assured that they will be able to finish. And next slide. So here's the financial breakdown of what we're asking you to consider investing. Because this is a three-pronged approach of how we do this. There is Miami University investment, which is not showing up there, but there's Miami University investment because we already have scholarships that are designated for students in this area that other people have set up some other time to go and we can direct that money to this program. Then we also have the Community Foundation. And every time we've done this, the Community Foundation for that particular municipality has stepped up and said, we will match that. And then they challenge us to go to the township or the city and ask them to match. So what you're seeing up there is what the estimated cost would be for students. So the first year, we're talking about bringing in five students, estimated cost to cover those five students, seventeen thousand five hundred. The Fairfield Community Foundation would give eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. The Fairfield Township would say, okay, we'll match that for eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we're saying, that's going to bring in five students. The next year, we add to it and then the next year, we add to it. But it's finally getting to a point where we're almost looking at twenty students being covered at any given time over four years. And that your matching of that just increases with that, but then it stabilizes at thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, you might say to yourself like, wow, that's a kind of a big number. But the thing is that covers those students and we only use what we need. So that money could go further. So there's not, it may not be a need to use a full seventeen thousand five hundred first year. It rolls over. And then that allows us to have more dollars to cover students. And over time, we may even be able to add more students. But the thing that gets us started is the initial commitment from the foundation and from the township. We've had some great conversations with the foundation, we feel like they're already on board. So now it's a matter of, can we find a partner in the township to say, we'll be willing to do this with you? And you can, we will work with you to think about the terms that work best to you. Because sometimes people talk about, well, this is what we think we can do, this is how we want to shape it. Here's the schools we want to participate, all those things. So we can shape this, it's not a cookie cutter system. We can talk through exactly how you want to participate in a way that makes you feel comfortable. So that's all the details I have. I think the last slide is a thank you and question and answer series. And thank you so much. And I want to just give a chance, Dean, Casey, if you have something you want to just add to it before we go into question and answer, just if you want to share anything that you think would be beneficial for them to know.
I'm sorry, could you come up to the mic for the people that are online and hear what you have to say? Thank you very much.
Sure, absolutely. I just want to thank you for taking the time to hear our discussion about the potential for a Fairfield Promise, Fairfield Township Promise. I think Yvette and Sammy did a great job of outlining how this works. And I just want to emphasize that the regional campuses of Miami University are open admission. We welcome any student. As Yvette pointed out, our costs are between seven thousand and seventy-five hundred dollars a year. So we're already very inexpensive place for students to get a very high-quality education. And we are also committed to even reducing that further. And this is one of the many programs we offer to help the most students we can go to college, get that degree debt-free. So these are small dollars for programs with big impacts. And we're seeing those in the Hamilton and Miltown community with many of our programs already. So just want to thank you for hearing us today and having us in. Thanks.
Questions from the board? I have a couple of questions. So would this be eligible to any of our residents that are homeschool? Instead of being Fairfield High School graduates?
Yes.
The number of residents that are homeschool that might follow that same Pell Grant eligible requirement?
Yeah, it's up to you, what you guys want your parameters to be. We kind of, it's not cookie cutter, so we're flexible to what you feel like is the best need. You know your community better than we do. But it would be eligible if you want to make a clause that homeschool, there's probably a lot of homeschool residents here, that they would be eligible for that, yes.
Okay. Do you have any kind of similar program that, for students that are in the juvenile detention center that might also be Fairfield School students?
Not currently in the juvenile detention center. I've been there, I toured with a couple of leadership groups recently, but we don't have nothing that technically, because that's eighteen and under high school kids. But if a kid was in there and they were Fairfield Township resident and if they're taking classes through their GED program and they're getting a two point five, when they come out of there, if they're living with a township address, they would be eligible for this program. So this could be locked after, they say locked up unfortunately, but yeah.
And then the other question I have, the slide on the board talked about seven, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for five students. And so that equals out to be thirty-five hundred dollars, which is what the money is after the Pell Grant is applied.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And so you're asking the Community Foundation and the township to cover that thirty-five hundred dollars. What is Miami's commitment to that thirty-five hundred dollars?
Great question. So we do a lot of different things. We have merit, merits grants or scholarships that we give to every student that has over three point O. We also give out, we have certain donors that have certain parameters about, and it also goes into that two point five. So we have dollars too that we give there. We have a couple of foundations that have also invested in this, so we have opportunity to give money. That's why we're able to drop it down to thirty-five on average. And to be honest too, is that we don't bill what don't, what's not used, if that makes sense. So we work with the foundation closely and you would get a bill from the foundation as they're checking the numbers and kind of checking balancing us on what those costs are. And what we have seen historically, and we already did it for one year, that the Pell eligibility of some of our students is a lot higher than what we initially expected. It's unfortunate because you can't get to exact science because you never know what your population is going to be. But we were able to actually do a lot more, a lot less the first, the first year getting through this program. But we just try to level set because we don't, it's just one of those averages. You do a five-year average, one year you might not have as much, one year you might have more. It's depending on what students and their family background.
Okay. And then I think, Ms. Vet, you talked about money would go in and then if it's not all used, roll over to the next year. Why wouldn't it just be, we get billed for whatever is used?
Our goal is to make this go as far as possible. That's, that's our number one goal. And that was the spirit that we went into it with that. One of the benefits that, of us doing this with two other communities is that we've learned some things. So when we come to you all talking about it, we can say, this is what we have learned from that and that we find it to be a great benefit to be able to say it can roll over because as we expand and you have more young people, then the dollars are already there. However, I am never going to tell you that if you want to give us a full check, we will happily accept your full check of dollars if that's what you would like to do. If you felt like that'd be in the best interest of the township. But we do say that the money rolls over and that's why we said that.
And let me clarify, you want to roll over? Because I think a, a small detail would be that we would not bill you for any unused funds. So what we mean by roll over, instead of seven kids, if we're able to serve ten because it's kids with the same amount of money, that's what roll over means. We would serve those ten kids to give them opportunity because their tuition is locked in. So that means they're not going to get no increase. So we know that we have this big set of money that will stretch for them for the whole four years. That's what roll over, not like you give us extra five thousand dollars, we didn't use it and then we're just sitting there with your money. No, it would be used and then if it's not used, you won't get a bill from it, invoice from the foundation.
And I'm sorry, I'm taking up time. No, okay. Okay, I just have one more question. So have you asked the City of Fairfield if they would like to participate in this as well?
Yes, we have asked out to the City of Fairfield.
And what was their response? Do you tell them?
We're, we're still waiting for them to bring it to council on the docket.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what we have done with our other, our other two partners in this, because Middletown and Hamilton did something completely different among the two of them. So for example, let's first talk about the schools that you would want to have benefiting, or the residents you want to have benefit. You can prescribe what that is. So for example, in Middletown, they said Middletown High School, Finnwick, Middletown Christian, and Marshall, and then any Butler Tech student that is affiliated with Middletown High School. That's how they outlined theirs. They also decided, and this is public because it's in the newspaper and everything, they also decided to take money from a general fund that they had, put it with the foundation and sit it there. And then the foundation is the one that actually pulls money off and sends it over to Miami University. And if they decide that this isn't working out, they put a thing in there where they can pull that, those dollars back. That's how they wanted us to work with them because they wanted to make sure, to your point, they don't have endless amounts of money, they budget differently. And regardless of the size of your township in terms of your dollars, it's more about you thinking about, what do we think we can do to be able to help the young people in our community? And that's why we said it's based on what you want to do. This is just a model that we present, but we can sit through and talk about how you think you can best serve. You can say, this is the dollars we have. What can you do with that? And we can look at how we can make that work. The worst-case scenario is if you're saying, look, we only have this amount of money, and we go to the foundation and say, this is what the township, at least they can do, here's how they can do it. And the foundation says, I'm not sure if we can make that work, but I think there's a way, because our tuition is so affordable, I think there's a way that we can make what you do have work, and you can do it year to year. We don't need you necessarily make a five-year commitment on paper, but the idea is that you are committed to a long-term relationship, at least to get the first week through for four years. So there's that part. And then Sammy can add more to that.
You did a great job, but I don't think I need to add anything to it. But yeah, I think, you know, to your question, it's what do you guys want to prescribe, as she said earlier? It's not that we tell you this is how it has to be. It might be two kids, you're saying, we're comfortable maybe with two kids on this is the max that we would cover. Then on that, beyond that amount that it's on the foundation, then the university will try to figure it out. And, but we would want to make sure we get that student from year one to year four. We wouldn't want to tell them, you got to promise to go to college, and then we can't get away from them halfway through. So we have our first year through with, with Hamilton and Middletown's first year just started this fall. So we had, it was roughly thirty-four students that started off in year one, and twenty-seven stayed for year two. So it is helping with retention rate. If you think of colleges, it's about sixty percent for us as a university, and we're actually one of the higher benchmarks throughout the state. We're always number one, number two in that area of retention as a regional campus, and something we're very proud of. But this has really helped kids, like, figure out. I had a conversation with a young man over the summer, he didn't know what he was doing with his life after high school, and I kind of knew his family, and I said, why don't you put Miami region, we've got a lot of options for you? Because this is not just only an on-rent, but like Morris said, we have WorkPlus, we have a lot of different options for kids, that they can work through college and get their tuition taken care of. But we're trying to make sure we're creating a lot of pathways and on-rents for kids to go and get through their debt-free, and partnering with our community members.
As Trustee McAfee said, we are very tight with our cash reserves right now. And I don't know, while this sounds absolutely like a great thing, I don't know that it's something that Fairfield Township can necessarily afford to do right now. But sitting here thinking and just listening to you, we, right before this, we had a CIC meeting. We also have a lot of wonderful, wonderful businesses in our community. And we have residents too that might be interested in supporting this. So I don't know that it's appropriate for the township necessarily to contribute to this, but I'm wondering if it might be something that would make sense to go out and talk to some of the businesses in our community? Because for them to put in a couple thousand dollars or even a couple hundred dollars, and it maybe that is something that goes through the CIC, and our law director would have to weigh in on that. But it also might be something that reaching out to some of our community partners or some of our businesses, they might be interested in saying, hey, yeah, this sounds like a great thing. And maybe they could put in some money for it too. I think the WorkPlus program, I've heard great things about that. I've heard wonderful, wonderful things about WorkPlus. I just don't know, perhaps some of our Fairfield Township businesses would be willing to start to contribute to some of those numbers as well. So something to think about, something that could be a potential path. And I think that's something that employers would probably gravitate towards because those are people that could come work for them at some point in the future. So just a solution to think about.
Well, I appreciate it. I know that probably will jump in.
No, I think, I thank you for the sharing, that.
Yeah, I would, I would say that's definitely an option as well, and the door's open. Our goal was just to try to raise awareness today on tonight, and if we can get you to say yes, yes, yes. But now that you know and understand the deficit and the spending, and you have to balance a budget, so nothing goes without being balanced. But in the future, if you want to work together and talk to a couple of businesses, we're happy to tag along and talk to them and show this presentation, or even a small, if you have a small group that come together, we can give a presentation about what this program offers, and then try to find and support the community, and move forward however that might make it work, really just try to start to get, so.
And I would like to have more conversations with our leaders in Hamilton and Middletown, and also the leaders at Fairfield, to see what they're upon thought on. I agree with my other two trustees. I think this is not, I would say it's a no, but it's a not now, my response. I think going some more investigating into it would be, would be appropriate. So I will reach out to some people I know in these communities and have conversations with them, and then maybe we can revisit this. Yeah, I would, I would give us until after maybe first quarter next year to see if this up for that week, but potentially due to twenty-seven. Please have a conversation. Maybe just talk to our administrator to see, you know, what, what our outlook is, is looking forward right now, and then we can have those conversations.
Thank you.
But thank you all there, and it's great to see you this morning.
Appreciate it, thank you, yeah, absolutely.
I knew you were coming tonight, so I didn't want to rag you too much.
I did. I want to say thank you again. And also, just as a Fairfield Township resident, I live off of Hamilton Mason in the Woodbury neighborhood, and have lived in the township now for about four years. I just want to thank you because it's a lovely place to work, a lovely place to live, and we love the playgrounds, and, you know, I have a small child. And so I just wanted to add that in as a resident, that I appreciate your work in making the township function. Thank you.
And I appreciate the work that you're doing, partnering with Butler Tech and working with Mr. Graff, Mr. Frankel, Dr. Frankels on the AMHOP project. It's exciting for this area, residents of Fairfield Township as well as the surrounding community, and that's taking advantage of that. So, and that's, that's a stretch for you, it's something new for you.
It is, yeah, yeah.
And I think you're doing great.
Thank you.
I look forward to working more with you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation about Timber Trails. Final P E Q, would this be Mr. Goins?
Yep. So briefly, in my home says, brought to the board, the final development plan for six lots that are located in the Timber Trails subdivision. This is called the section three of that development. I don't know if I need to spend too much time kind of orienting you. It's the subdivision off of Liberty Fairfield, the northern portion of the township. This, these six lots are actually going to be tied into the, I think it's White Pine Lane, which is a part of the Timber Trails, or the Timber Hill development. But this is actually still within the P U D of Timber Trails. That's the only real confusing part of this. So yeah, the applicant is looking at these six single-family residential lots. Section three is comprised of seven-point-three acres, and it includes a decent amount of open space, including a detention basin and wooded area north of the planned lots. I feel like you guys are familiar enough with this development. We don't need to go too much into the history of it. I did present you guys the report a little bit in advance of this meeting. It's staff's opinion that the conditions that were placed on the P U D are going to be met with this development, and that the P U D is consistent with section six fifteen-point-seven of the zoning resolution, and will promote public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Fairfield Township. And staff recommends approval of these, of this proposal. We do have a representative with MI Homes here who may like to speak on this, if you'd be interested. It's really all I have to say about it.
Sure, you would like to step up to the microphone and give a brief presentation?
Sure. Well, thank you for your time. My name's Mike Athan with MI Homes. And as Chuck said, you know, not, not a whole lot to this, no, no issues with any of the conditions listed in the report. Just wanted to, a little bit more clarity on what these six lots will be, given, yeah, as you can see, they are contiguous and connected to the street network in Timber Hill. They will go into that HOA. So, you know, really, it's got a little bit higher level of finish requirements. These will be all first-floor brick wrap kind of homes, which is different from the rest of Timber Trails. But again, I don't even think you're going to see these six lots from Timber Trails. You'll just see them from Timber Hill. It is pretty heavily wooded in between. But those six lots will be constructed where we've got the contractor ready to go, and they'll be constructed with the final phase of Timber Hill. And you should see that get paved and see the record coming through in the next sixty, ninety days. Both of these communities have been great for us. You know, we've kind of hit in the middle of the pandemic, and this, this, this community has hit good price points, and it seems like the customers have been great. We've been thrilled with both of these, and sorry to see that this is the end of it. But thanks for your time, and open for any questions.
Questions from the board?
These six, they should be in about in the low six hundreds. Timber Trails, I believe is more about the four-fifty to five-hundred range. Always depends on your options and what you want to do with your architectural elements. But it's been about a hundred thousand dollar gap between Timber Hill and Timber Trails. Again, the architectural elements and the finishes aren't quite as high in Timber Trails as these six will be in Timber Hill. Ah, let's see, we've got, let me see, we're about fifty left in Timber Hill, and these, Timber Trails is completely gone. These, these six are all that's left as part of the original P U D. And a lot of what's left at Timber Hill is we've got the duplex, the attached products that have gone a little bit slower than the single-family, but they're starting to move now, and there's probably more of those than the single-family that are left currently. So these are coming at a, at a great time. And the duplex, they start in the three-fifty range, but again, I think we're seeing most of our sales closer to four hundred once the customers make their way through the options and make their selections. It's kind of a three-tiered level here, the those villas in Timber Hill, and the single-family in Timber Trails, and then these single-family in Timber Hill will be the highest of the three privates that we've offered in these two communities.
We've got a couple of complaints, or at least one recently about drainage issues and stuff like that.
Yeah, Chuck mentioned that to me a little bit ago. I hadn't heard that. I, we have field personnel that take care of that, so yeah. By all means, we'll get to the bottom of what that is. I don't know where it is, or if it's our, our residents or neighbors, or what.
Yeah, so this is, it's a new construction next to a single-family home that was constructed by MI earlier. It's occupied. The property owners reached out to the township a couple times about some concerns. MI has been very responsive with the concerns that we've provided to them, and the, the construction crew is fairly aware, I mean, they're aware of the, the residents' concerns. It's still not a, you know, finished graded lot. Some of the concerns are with drainage, and there's a swale that's going to be located between the lots. I reached out to the property owner earlier this week and haven't heard back from him, which is typically a good sign, that there's not an issue at this moment. All right? So there's that. But yeah, we have this one on our radar, and we will not, we'll make sure that the next-door neighbor gets a thorough once-over of the grading and everything before we put our stamp on it. And MI is very aware of it, and very receptive to all the requests that we've made, and he mentioned that there are some issues with flooding in the basement, but again, he hasn't reached back out to me specifically. The basement, I have not been in his house, no. I've been, oh, I haven't been in the basement. I've been in the main store of the house, looked at some issues that he's pointing out from his deck, but I have not been in his basement. He, there wasn't issues with the basement when I was in his house.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm wondering, we have a customer care line, which all of our folks are, that's kind of their first, first stop if they've got an issue with their homes. Like, you know, by all means, I'd be checking with them in the morning to hear what the current status is and if something's been done. All right, yeah, by all means, you know, we, we live on our customers and their ratings and their recommendations, and we take it extremely seriously, especially if there's a basement problem, it's a part of this.
Yeah, I was over there, and I worked the property with the homeowner, and it appeared to me that the new construction caused a little bit of damage to some drain tile that was draining water away from the homes. And when that, before that home gets their final grade, new drain tile will be within and handle most of that piece. That's what I understand is could have gone happen. So.
Glad to hear that it's not a finished lot yet.
It's not, it's still.
Still working.
Yeah, I mean, the current homeowner, it's, the one that's living there, it's, it's a finished lot.
Yeah, okay.
It's sod and everything. But, and the lot that is being built, so I noticed some drain tile had been damaged by heavy equipment. And that was going to be fixed, and I think that would help alleviate some of the water issues. I don't know that it's been done yet, because I think they're still working on the home. So I think that you're going to wait to be finished with the home, and then work on the exterior grading. That's my understanding.
You don't happen to recall the customer's name?
The customer?
Yeah.
Jeff Moore, that's no, no, hard to read.
For sure.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Goetz. Okay, the next item is items for board discussion. Mr. Pency?
So under Personnel Manual, so if we get some feedback from the trustees on the specia that we had, we had a question that came up recently regarding how we distribute vacation time in our Personnel Manual. The manual dictates that vacation leave is accrued on a five-weekly basis and the hours of vacation increase at five, 10, and 20 a year. So, you know, based on our Personnel Manual, from one to five years, you receive two, two weeks of vacation. Five to 10, it's three weeks. 10 to 20, it's four weeks. Then 20 awards. So you can see that the accrual rate changes, but you don't really receive that extra week of vacation until the sixth year, eleventh year. So it was, one of the employees had asked, what is our stand on that? And I thought that I would ask you guys if there is any way that you guys can change the way the manual is written so that that employee, when he moves that anniversary date, would be able to reach that extra week. You know, when the person's having a week, a whole other year. So right now, it's after the completion of that year?
Yes. It's accrued 1/26th every pay period. So they work two weeks, then they accrue 1/26th of their vacation for that year. So if we did the extra week on year five, the day they turned year five, then by the end of year five, they've now gone at four weeks instead of three. So. My sugge-, well. Well, my suggestion to fix it would be to have them start accruing at the higher rate at four years instead of at five. But I have looked into several Personnel Manuels and several vacation policies. And even at Metro Parks, we do it exactly the way we do it here at Fairfield Township. You up your accrual when you hit that period. So when you're fi-, when you're here five years and two weeks, you have five years and 1/26th of your vacation. So you get, you earn it, then you get it. Or you, yeah, you earn it, then you get it. So that's a way, I've always done things, that's why this is this way. We did change the policies four, five years ago and looked into this when we changed it at that time. Because in the past, prior to this, everyone was getting their vacation on one, one. So if you were here a year and a month, you got all your vacation. If you were here a year and 11 months, you got all your vacation. And I didn't love that because people could be here and get all their vacation on one, one, use it all by 1/31 and leave, or get it paid out. So we did lots of research on this and determined that you should work your two weeks, then get your 1/26th. I think what. Well, not the first year though. The policy says the first year you accrue 1/26th all the way around, but you can't use it until you hit that year mark. When you hit that year mark, then you've got your two weeks. It does, you get. Because if you work two weeks, then you earn 1/26th year of vacation. You earn it, yes, you just can't take it. Well, it's kind of done that way anyway because you can't carry over more than one year's worth. So you're always, you're never going to have more than one year's worth in your bank, ever. Two, well, two weeks if you're under five years, three weeks if you're under 10 years. So you're never going to have more than your one year's worth, whatever your one year's worth is. Yes. Yes. That's a difference, that's a different, whole different subject that Kim's going to address too. That the policy manual on that is just not clear. I can tell you what's been done in the past, but it has never been clear or consistent. Well, that's what I'm getting at. It wasn't right in the past, which is why Kim is asking for clarification so that we don't have to decide at the last, as the limb of the hat. We want it in writing. Because you work two weeks, then you accrue what you worked. For your first year, yes. Well, it doesn't really change. It's just the policy says you don't get to take any vacation your first year. And that's very standard. Right, so yes, we could do nothing and give it to you on year one and then start accruing on year one, but you can't take it. So it's just showing you how much. If you leave before the end of the year, you don't get to get paid out. It's. No, because you. No, you can't take it before you leave if it's less than a year. You just can't do anything. Well, year two, you've got your two weeks that you earned from working on year one. And then in two, in one year and two weeks, you'll have one year's worth and 1/26th of your second year. You can, but then you've earned it because you've been there a year. So you've earned it.
So I guess, just to be, I think you guys are trying to say the same thing. I think what Mr. McBe, Trustee McBe is trying to say, and I'm agreeing with what you're saying. He's saying that after one year, you were there, you could take those two weeks. However, you don't earn the other two weeks until you have, I guess, it would take 26 pay periods to earn the other two weeks. So truly. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I was saying. Like in year one, you're, in year two, basically, you're using the two weeks vacation that you earned, you earned in year one. And in year two, if you take those two weeks and then leave, you haven't accrued any more vacation time to get paid out from year two. You've only approved what you earned in year one. So if you take one year, if you take one week's vacation and leave, you could get paid out for that second week that you earned in year one.
In year one, yes. I believe they say they follow our policy, which we worked with prison fire when we made it. We changed it for that reason because if you do it all upfront, company sometimes could get screwed. If you do it at the end, then the employees. So if you work two weeks and accrue 1/26th, it's fair for everybody. We get, and we give it to you on the day of, the last day of the pay period. So we don't make you wait until the payday. When you work your two weeks, on that Saturday, when the pay period ends, you get your 3.08 hours. So in my opinion, is the most fair. I don't think Kim's arguing that. She's just saying that if our policy says at five years, you have three weeks, you don't really have three weeks at five years. You start accruing three weeks at five years. So the language either needs to be changed to say that or the language needs to be changed to say you get the full week. And like I said, the only reason I don't agree with that is because then at the end of year six, now you've got four weeks instead of three. So in my opinion, if you're going to fix it, you could start accruing it at year four because then at, at year five, the day you turn year five, now you've got your three weeks. But there's no front loading.
But if somebody leaves, like if they burn that in year five and then they leave, like day one of year six, do they get that three weeks?
Yes. Which is why I don't want to give a whole week at one time because then they could leave the next day and get it all paid out. If you earn it. Right, right. So it would have to be the same thing as year one. You earn it during year four, but you can't take it till, till year five. Then you earn it during year nine, you can't take it till year 10. Right. Yes. So it would just say, you, you just, the accrual would go up a year early. But, so you would have that vacation the time, the minute you hit it, but you can't take that extra week until you hit that five years. So you work year zero, you can't take it till you hit year one. Then you work year four, you can't take just that one week. Not the prior two weeks you had from the one to five, but the extra week. But either way, we just need to make sure the policy matches what we're doing. And that, I think, is what we are agreeing on.
I just think if you're going to have steps into rewards system, most government employees, it's, I'm not really sure who she asked or who she compared it to. But every place I've worked in the last 30 years, you get the extra week on year five, get the extra week on year 10. Most of the time, you get an extra week in year 15, you get another extra week in year 21. That's just how government does it.
15, four years.
Yes. Yes. Right. Or you get it on your anniversary.
Yeah, but she's not, I don't think she's saying what you're saying. You're saying start of year four accrue and she's saying wait till year five to give the entire week, the day they hit it.
Right, so you're getting that extra.
The five years. Yes. But then you're, if you accrue at the higher rate, then like I said, at the end of six years, you now got four weeks instead of three. So. Agreed. Well, it's a whole extra week. I mean, it doesn't matter to me because it don't affect me, but I'm guessing it matters to the trustees because it's money.
I just think if you're going to establish a system where you're reporting for loyalty, why not give them that extra week and those steps? No, I just asked for additional week at year five instead of year six. The extra week at year 10 versus year 11. That's what we do now. You don't get to do it until year six.
Yeah, but really you don't have to wait till year six. You have to wait till, you could take 1/26th of it at five years and two weeks. You can take 2/26th of it, five years and four weeks. It don't take, it takes the whole year to earn the full amount, but it doesn't take the whole year to use that week. You can use 1/26th of that week, two weeks in. You can use it whenever now, it's just you won't have it until you earn it. I would think you would agree with me because I'm saying work, then get it, not get it, then work. I'm saying work, then get it. Yeah, because they worked their two weeks. No, they can.
You're saying the exact same thing. You're, you are, you're saying the exact same thing in two different ways.
I agree with, with Mr. Pency. They're earning it and they're.
Just saying, you guys are agreeing with each other.
You are agreeing with Shelley. Shelley says that they are, during their fifth year, they are, sorry, they're.
Fifth year.
Fifth year. They are starting to get the 1/26th every patient, but they can't use it until they've been there five years. It's accruing, but they can't use it.
No, 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 no. Well, you will get an extra week once you've completed your five week, your five years, but you won't get the very end of it until the very end of your anniversary year.
So once they've completed five years, they are, they will have the three weeks to use because they've accrued the third week during the fourth year.
You're saying what my proposal is, not the current.
The current, it's just in your fifth year.
Okay, so they're accruing it in the fifth year. And so they can't use that third week during the fifth year. They can have to wait until their anniversary date. Once their anniversary date hits, the two weeks that they get, that's the extra week that they earned on day, five year and one. Five year, one day, now they have three weeks. Because they've accrued it in year five.
Which is what we're doing.
Who's on first?
No, this is how I changed it. So it is accruing because in my opinion, if you work two weeks, you should get 1/26th year vacation. In, in year one.
Year one is the only time you can.
And that's only because our policy says no vacation year one can be taken, period.
So in year two, they could take two weeks because they earned it in year one.
Yep.
But let's say they're at two years and six months. Can they use, can they take two and a half weeks because they've earned it?
Yes. But they've earned it. They worked.
Well, this, the way our policy is written now is you accrue it every two weeks.
You work two weeks, you accrue 1/26th.
It doesn't say anything about.
Well, you do earn it as you work. So you're not. So maybe we should just pay our salaries annually too.
Right, let's do that.
Just otherwise getting paid on a day.
Yeah, because until you work till the end of the year, you don't deserve your salary.
Earn it until December 31st and then you can pay.
There's a lot of places that do that, that give your vacation there, like on your anniversary. Like what he's saying, once you, every year you're complete, you get your 80 hours or your 120 hours or whatever. That, my last place I worked, that's how they did it.
I think this is a counter.
Okay. We were doing it upfront, I wanted to make it different.
Giving a third week in that fifth year, they're earning the third week in that fifth year.
You're not giving it upfront.
Right.
Earning it, you're earning it and then getting it the very next year. You're not getting it upfront.
Right, you're earning.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't matter what you decide. We just need a policy manual to, to match so that. Well, we'll be here till tomorrow then.
So currently, the way it's written, that they're earning it and they can use it in years.
Yes.
We don't want to change that.
Then just, we just leave it alone. Yep, that's fine. The other thing though, that I would like you to clarify is. Well, I will tell you, there's a lot of places out there that if you, say you, you just start in and the first week or the first year, you negotiate for some amount of vacation and then you can get that curated. Not that we should do that here, but not getting any vacation the first year, I think that's probably kind of hard for attracting employees. Just something to think about going forward.
Agreed, but we do give personal days. So they do have something.
Right.
And it's very, I know it does, I know it's not great, but it is pretty standard to not have any vacation your first year. I don't love it either, but I mean, it's pretty standard. And, and of course, with the personal days and then, I don't know, do sick come right away too? Every pay period. I mean, if it's your first year, you got three personal days and several sick.
I get it. I, I, I don't necessarily want to change that or open up that can of worms. I'm just making an observation there with that one. And I'm okay with, I think it's after you, like your first, year zero. So it's really year zero, year one, or completing your zero, completing your one, completing your two, completing your three, completing your four.
Yep.
And then after you've completed five years of service, whatever that date is, five circles, then you earn that extra week.
Yeah, then you start accruing at a higher rate.
Right.
The three week rate. Like I said, it, I mean, I'm totally good with whatever you guys do. It's just our policy manual, it's never been super clear, so.
And I just, I think I'd like our law director to make sure that that's cohesive with our, with our contracts, to make sure that that makes sense.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Pency, please.
All right, so in Section F, it also states that an employee shall be entitled to carry over vacation leave into the new calendar year, January 1st. The number of vacation leave hours an employee can carry over is equal to the total number of vacation leave hours that the employee is entitled to accrue for one year based upon years of service. The problem with this section is that it does not specify what happens to the amount of vacation if they have more than what they are allowed to carry over. Like what happens to that? Does it get paid out or do they just lose it? The, our Personnel Manual is silent on that specifically. So I'd like some clarification, like can we write a section in there to clarify, you know, what, what does actually happen? Another item I would like to point out though is if you, if you work, we're going to use the January 1st date, what happens if you get hired in December? And you kind of get, kind of get a little, for the hiring date for. Yeah, so you get this. Service, it's not on the anniversary. Oh, you mean just that specific? Yeah, that specific section, it might be, make it hard for everybody to use their weeks that they get if they're getting their weeks in December and then you got to hurry up and use it in a month. Yeah, that specific section that might make it hard for everybody to use their weeks that they get if they're getting their weeks in December and then you gotta hurry up and use it in a month.
But they're, but they're not getting their weeks in December. They're never getting a lump sum ever with this policy, with the policy, the way we do it. So even if they were hiring December, they still have one, one of their year's worth. So they've accrued it the prior year, not that day. So there is no lump sum, so.
Right, but what if they don't use any? Say they don't use any.
Then they, then they can carry it over. Because they, that's your one year's worth.
So year two, say they don't, still don't use any, and then they've got two weeks that they've carried over. Now they've got four.
Well, that, that's why that policy is that, so that they cannot.
Well, but if this policy does not say what happens to those extra weeks.
Agree. I, we definitely need some clarification on what happens. Totally agree, but I don't think you're in any advantage or disadvantage depending on when you're hired. But absolutely, the policy does not state. I can tell you in the past, and I agree, what we've done in the past has not always been right, which is why we want clarification. In the past, I would give the administrator a report at the end of the year that said how many people had more than their one year's worth. What was done with that, I don't know, but I was told it was to coach people to take their vacation. That we don't want people carrying all this over. You should be taking your vacation. I don't know if that was done, but I was, I would give her a list every year of who had extra vacation. It was usually the same people. I did not pay it out unless I was specifically told to pay it out. That's the way it was done in the past. Not that I can remember. I don't think, I, I can't swear, but I don't think so. I don't think we've ever paid anybody out. Two weeks, okay. And I. Yeah, and you guys can make it whatever you want. Yeah, the only vacation payouts I think we do is when someone leaves. I don't remember ever doing one mid-cycle. Very few people ever have more than their one year's worth, but there was a handful of times and I would just let the administrator know that these people, you know, have more than their one year's worth. At the time she wanted to know because she wanted to coach the people to make sure they were taking vacation, not saving it up. Because we obviously don't want to pay that out when they leave. Year's worth, or weeks worth, I should say. But the policy does need to state it. And we don't care which way you guys go, but it either needs to state that you can carry over one year's worth and you lose the difference, or you can carry one year's worth and we pay out the difference, or you can change it to not be one year's worth, go back to two weeks. We don't care what you do. It's just it doesn't say it right now.
It should be the anniversary date.
It should be the anniversary date in my mind.
Definitely should be the anniversary date.
Yeah, I mean, it's been one, one as long as I've been here and it's honestly, now that we accrue, it does, it doesn't matter when you're hired. If one, one is the day, one, one's the day. I mean, it, you could pick any day. We did it for, I guess, I assume it was done for ease of payroll because we pay out all, what's the other thing we pay out? Six hours over nine hundred and sixty hours, that's it year end. So everything that we pay out is usually year end. So we just made it to where it was part of the year-end process because if you do it at anniversary date, then now every single anniversary date, we have to look, we have to touch the accruals. Now we just do it one time a year. Only every five years. So that's, and our system automatically does that. When we set up ADP, the accruals work like clockwork now. They work wonderful. And then if someone was to hire on, like your, to your point, Mrs. Harkmire, sometimes someone gets hired on and they do negotiate up, up, week upfront, we could just add it and then the accruals start there. So we then don't have to touch it. We can just do one-time adjustment. We do one-time adjustments when we pay out sick time over nine hundred and sixty hours. We pay it out and we adjust it back down to nine hundred and sixty hours. And then the police have something they get paid out for comp time. We pay that out and adjust it. So everything's at one, one. That's the only reason. And the dates, the anniversary date really is not an advantage or disadvantage. It's actually the second pay in January so that we can make sure that everyone got their Christmas time off out before we, in case someone saves a lot of their time for Christmas.
If you don't think bad about doing that in February, it's kind of not. Because you can only pension what you're on. It's not, it doesn't count. If you didn't earn it in the same year, it'll pay out.
So we just want some direction on the handbook so that when someone is more than two weeks and I bring it to him, she doesn't have to make the decision.
Well, I don't want to make this decision. I want it to be in this book so I can go, the guy's, my boss has said this.
If you decide to pay it out. Right now, it doesn't say pay it out.
Right.
It just says you can only carry your, your one year's worth. That's what it says.
So one year's worth, meaning what you've earned in the previous year, not two weeks.
Right.
So if you earned three weeks, then.
Three weeks is your one year's worth.
You can carry over for three weeks.
Right.
Right.
Yep, whatever you're going. You can make it whatever you want. I just need to make my accrual match that.
Um, I tend to agree. I think the most you should be able to carry over is eighty hours. I think, I don't want to put too much strain on our workforce and overtime because someone didn't use vacation time. Now it's gotta work overtime to make up those hours. And quite frankly, I think if you don't, if you don't use the vacation time that you are allotted other than those eighty hours, I think you just lose, I don't think you should have paid out. I know that you've earned it, but I think we need to make sure people, vacations are also mental health breaks. And our employees should be using that time for mental health breaks as well. And I think that might even force them to do it. But I'd love to hear other opinions.
I'd like to know how it's gonna impact operations. If it's two weeks or if it's a year's worth, I mean, tell me how that, how you see this impacting operations. Is there anything else that we need to know or?
Without looking at details of, of the fire union contract, I can't answer that sitting here.
That's right. And you, and you don't, you don't, I, you don't, I'm sorry to put you all on the spot. I know you weren't expecting this question, but if you have some, I'm just curious how it impacts operations or what you think. Is there something I need to know that's relevant to this? And it's okay if there's.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if we're gonna change, I think if we're gonna change from being able to carry over what you earn within one calendar year to two weeks, I think it should be something we should, you know, notify the staff about and then maybe have a time when that takes effect.
Like a taper.
Because there will be, you know, people will, people are planning their year based on what they think they're gonna have, what they think they can carry over. So I think we should slow our way into that, that specific piece. I think, you know, I think that, I'm pretty sure that the unions are able to get that paid out. Um, so I think there are some people who view vacation as, uh, what, I mean, it's a, it's a part of the compensation, total compensation package. But again, that's a policy decision for the board to make. It definitely doesn't make anything more attractive by reducing it to two weeks and not paying anybody out. It doesn't make being an employee here more attractive.
That's a fair point. Um, also, I did not take into consideration when I made my statement that how would that affect coverage? You know, if people were saying, I have to use this vacation or lose it and then it causes us to have non-coverage. So I just want to backtrack on my request because I didn't think about that.
I think that was, because I mean, I think we made this adjustment in 2020, uh, when we went from just having a two-week carryover to being able to carry over the, what you earn within a calendar year. I think it was to kind of provide a little bit of flex room, especially in December, uh, especially, I mean, their department. I mean, this, this policy really only impacts the non-union employees. So their, the public works department is, they're, they're the group that depending on the weather, they might not be able to use it and they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna, they could be working a lot.
Right.
And it doesn't seem to be very employee-friendly to have, you know, have a, a stick at the end of the, the calendar cycle. But again, I think we adjusted it based on calendar date. That would make, you know, hire date would make more sense, but I, I don't think that. I don't love this, I guess.
No, I agree with that.
And then what happens if there's a snowstorm and we need you? Exactly. I know you do.
Yeah, and I apologize, Mr. Bennett. I, I was just thinking more like office personnel. But I mean, when you have our public works department, you have to have people in those trucks. Uh, they can't just say, oh, I have to use my vacation or I'm losing it. Sorry, Joe Citizen, your car's gonna be in a ditch. So. Yeah, I, I agree that we need to make sure that if they don't use it, they could compensate for it.
Yes, it does help spreading it out because otherwise you're gonna have a mad dash to December for everyone.
Okay, I think the consensus is that the hire date should, the anniversary date should be the, the, is that fair to say, Trustee McAbby?
I'd, I'd like to see some more data about that.
Work, week.
So that, so that part needs to be clarified in the contract.
Right.
Because based on my understanding of employment rules in the state of Ohio, is if that piece is left unclarified, then you have to do, you have to pay out. So it needs, this point needs to be clarified.
Okay.
And what would that clarification be that you went to see? A hundred percent of your accrued vacation. I don't, that's what we're trying to clarify.
Okay, so how about if, because it sounds like right now we're letting, that you can, you can carry over whatever you accrued the year before. So if that's either two weeks or three weeks, four weeks, whatever, for paying purposes, people can, can do that. And then in conjunction with that, what I'm hearing is if you use it or lose it, does that sound like it would be conducive to operations? Am I missing something?
I think it's too soon to make that decision. I think to make that decision, just a snap decision after a fifteen-minute conversation, I think it's, it's gonna take more conversation than.
So how about this? You've heard our discussion that we've had today. Can you kind of take all this information and um, perhaps work with, with our law director because I know that she has experience with employee relations and all that good stuff and maybe come up with based on the discussions and different proposals? And then also some data that we talked about on the person that we're up to meet as well. And then we can take a look at that and then have small discussions about that.
Okay.
And I'm really, I think that the, we need to, um, weigh heavily on how we can support township operations. While also maintaining that balance with the employee balance and work-life balance.
And I would say, the only other thing I would suggest is whatever changes you make, just make them effective, like a date, not because, yeah, January 1st or something because I do. I do. Accountants love January 1st. You can.
I don't want to do that.
It, that could be. Yeah, it could be payout nothing, payout the full balance or payout fifty percent of that. You can make it whatever you want, as long as it's in the handbook and is better than ORC. So the ORC sets guidelines and we have to do either the same or better than those guidelines.
Okay, so that, let's weigh in with whatever the proposals.
Right now, our current policy is better than ORC, so we're okay. But I'm just saying.
Let's get, uh, let's get our law director involved with this conversation as well so we can take a look at that and come up with some proposals based on the discussions that we've had.
And could you ask some of our surrounding communities what they have in mind?
Yeah, I was gonna say I pulled about fifteen of them, so I'll, but I can summarize some of that.
Any other discussion on that matter for now? Okay, does anybody need to take a brief recess before we continue? Are we good to keep going? Okay, right now. Okay. Try to make this quick. Okay, uh, communication, uh, this is the portion of the year meeting. For you, the residents of Fairfield Township are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please know that this time has been set aside from the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue on this time and presentations are limited to three minutes each. Have anybody signed up? No one threw all that and no one signed up? Okay. Love saying that. Okay, we'll move on to fiscal officer business.
All right. So.
I'm sorry. We've gone to consent agenda. See, I got in front of me now. Uh, all items under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for removal of an item. Ideas removed for separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I will second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Trustee Harkmire.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbby.
And the consent agenda is adopted. Do we have the first, uh, fiscal officer's report?
Thank you. You've all received a copy of the balances that I will read for you. Uh, checking account balance, one point eight million. Um, investment account balance, fifteen point two million. The interest earned in August was forty-seven thousand. Jevner Avenue for Hamilton, year-to-date's five hundred and thirty thousand, Fairfield, thirty-one thousand. We had, we did get grant money. It was nineteen thousand, nine ninety-seven. I know that was a fire grant. Um, EMS billings to date, six hundred and fifty-eight point seven thousand. Revenue to date, nine point two million. Revenue budgeted, fifteen point four. Expenditures to date, ten point six. Appropriations for twenty-five, twenty-three point six. And payments made in August were seven hundred and forty-two thousand. All of our balances together, seventeen point two million. And we did get our tax settlement yesterday. Five, how much was it? Five point eight million. That's all I have.
Any questions for the fiscal officer?
We put it all under general. I don't think we put it in any other fund. It's not a special revenue. No, we just put it under, what was it?
Five million.
General, yeah, 592 under the appropriation line item that coming, going into is by 892, which is miscellaneous revenue going into the general fund. 15.5. And we plan to be under that. I don't even think of that. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. We have the administrator's report, please.
All right, Resolution 25-118 is a resolution approving changes to the police department policeman policy manual for Fairfield Township. So at the last meeting, we discussed creating a drone program here in the township. So this policy change would be to add the new policy 605 unmanned aerial system. And it would go into their personnel manual for the police department.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-118.
Second.
I heard Mr. McAbey's second. Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbey. Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 25-119 is a resolution authorizing the creation of the police drone operator position in the police department and approving the position description. So basically, this is not a new position with the police department. It is just an extra position in the police department so that one or more police officers could actually become drone operators in addition to their other police duties as assigned.
I move to adopt 25-119.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
No, this is just an extra duty in, you know, on top of their police officer's position. So if his goal is, is he wants multiple officers to be able to operate the drone so that at any given time, whatever shift it's on, he's not calling somebody in off the, you know, that's not on duty to operate the drone so that somebody there can already operate it. No. No.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier. Trustee McAbey.
No, they're still, they're still, which is extra duties. It's kind of like, it's kind of like being in the fire department where you're a firefighter, but then you're also part of the tech rescue team or you're also part of the IMAT team. You're still a paid firefighter, but then you have this extra duty that you signed up for that you might, may or may not get overtime for when the time comes.
Great. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 25-120 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of the drones and necessary accessory equipment and the application software from DSLR Pro's Intelligent Drone Solutions for the Police Department in the amount of $29,738, which would be paid from the Drug Law Enforcement Fund, number 2221, and the Equitable Sharing Fund, 2911. I would like to point out that those two funds are special revenue funds that we get from drug seizures. So they are put into a special fund and they're, they have a lot of restrictions on them. You can only use them for drug-related activities. So that is why we're choosing or requesting that the board use these funds to pay for the drone operation because it will help in that, with that regard.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I mean, recently we've had a use, or a need for that. We've had children that were missing. I think it's awesome. So Ms. Schultz, we.
No.
Those are the block health numbers. Those will be called into service for special needs. Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey. Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-121 is a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Fairfield Township Police Department and the United States Secret Service. So what this does is currently we pay gray key to provide us equipment to, like basically break into someone's phone. Say they have a warrant. The police department has to have a warrant and they want to access your phone due to criminal activity. The gray key program allows us to buy or purchase or rent equipment that allows us to have access to that phone. So that, we pay around 17,000, $18,000 a year for that particular piece of equipment. So with this, moving to the United States Secret Service, we will be able to get that equipment for free with just this simple memorandum of understanding. And that will save us 17, $18,000.
Second. Yeah, I think this is a great saving that you found, Mr. Bennett. So thank you for your, your efforts. Oh, and the chief was.
Yes, the chief.
Fantastic. I will, I will spread that message in. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey. Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-122 is a resolution authorizing the township administrator to purchase a new camera, the meeting room from PCS in the amount of $8,093, which will be paid from the general fund. So it will be to replace the, where's the webcam or what's in the, oh, that's right, it's on the blinds. So see that little sticky webcam that we have up there on top of the blinds? Basically, I can rig that up since COVID. Yeah. So we've been operating on this little tiny webcam and it really doesn't have the capacity to provide streaming and all the things that we've kind of pushed it to do over the last five years. I know several times I could sit and look at the computer and it's sitting there spinning because it just doesn't have the capabilities. So this new camera will give us the services that we need for what we're doing.
Okay, I move to adopt 25-122. Is there a second? Further discussion?
Have we looked at other cost options? Is there something we could do for this $8,000?
Uh, we did. We discussed all options and this was the cheapest one for PCS.
I think it's important, the number of meetings we have, I mean, obviously we need at least 12 times a year zoning, meetings, zoning appeals, all those are recorded and streamed. I think it's important that we have reliable equipment. That also makes it, I think, easier for staff as well. I'm in favor of this one-time investment to make sure that we have something that the residents that cannot come to the meetings have full access to viewing. More reliable, we try to provide something that's important.
Right. But this should always work. And I thought, Chuck, it would say it would help with us, our audio issue too, or are we going to have to maybe work at audio for it too? Okay, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbey. Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Okay, Resolution 25-123 is a resolution authorizing turf repairs at Heroes Park by Playground Equipment Services in the amount of $7,500, which we paid from the general fund. Recently, well, it's been a while, we've, we have had a tear in the seam on the play hill where the, like where the tube is and there's a hill over top of it. So it's come apart quite a bit. I don't know if underneath this, we wrote it, but we've had two different playground companies out looking. The one company, they were going to charge us around $22,000 to replace the turf for the entire hillside. And then PES just came out last week and then gave us a quote for 7,500 to repair it. My guess is they probably only want to patch a certain, like small portion of it. Am I correct? Oh, pretty good size? Okay. 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 All right. But this was the original company that you guys hired to install that playground. So it's, it's a lot cheaper for them to do versus we did.
How, how was that? I'm sorry, Trustee McAbey. I'll let you make your question.
Second.
So I heard Trustee McAbey and Trustee Harkemaier. So that park has been in place, is it six or seven years? Six years? Right? It's a lot of usage. Now, will they be doing anything to try to prevent this or nothing again, or it could, it could happen again? Great. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbey. Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 25-124 is a resolution to approve the proposed final PUD for MI Homes Timber Trail Section 3 as set forth in zoning case number FTZC 25-1C final PUD.
Second. Any questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbey.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 25-125 is a resolution authorizing repairs to medic unit 921 from FASR in the amount of $10,260.09, which will be paid from the Fire and Rescue Fund, 2281.
Yeah, I can. This is a 2021 Ford F550 with 64,000 miles. The work being done is basically a front-end rebuild. I can go through all the parts if you'd like. It's drag link, support arms, upper and lower ball joints, things like that. This is normal wear and tear for a vehicle with this mileage. And this also includes front and rear brakes, rotors and pads.
Second. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. Couple days, two, three, four days.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee McAbey.
That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
The next two resolutions, I apologize for when we added these at the last minute. We ended up receiving our tax money yesterday. So in accordance with our contracts with the, with the Fairfield City Schools, we have to disburse this money within 30 days. So since we have a meeting tonight, I added it at Shelley's request. So I hope that's okay with you guys. The resolution number 25-126 is a resolution dispersing 471,423.51 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund, which are numbers 2904, 2906, and 2908. This time, I don't think they got me from 2910, for distribution of TIP monies collected to the Fairfield City School District. So, and I outlined, in the Princeton Road TIP, we received 1,232,246.33, which we owed the schools 25%. Seward Road TIP, we received 737,79.57, which we owe the schools 62.3%. Under the Story Point TIP, we received 154,489.41, which of course we owed Fairfield City Schools 25%. So when I did attach, she, that we did a packet that outlines it.
Does the resolution state 2910?
Uh, no, I left 2910 off.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-126.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
They, they pay all theirs upfront on the first half. So we don't get second half usually. Well, it's only been two years, but for the second year in a row, it was paid all upfront.
Hey, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier.
Yes.
Trustee McAbey.
That resolution is adopted. May we have?
Well, it would have already went to the schools before we got it.
We would have gotten our normal collection and everybody else would have gotten their normal collection. So the county would get their share.
Library.
Our share, library, the parks. Yeah. Everybody would get their normal share.
But overall, we'd get less because we only pay, we're only paying 25% to the schools on two of our TIPS. And they would have got 62.3%. When it renews at the 30-year mark.
2031 is when we have to go to 62.3%.
And the other one, does it ever change? I'm not sure. We'll have to read up on that. Princeton. 2904. Sorry, might be six. Six.
Yeah.
2906. Yeah.
Did I answer all your questions?
Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
I was gonna say we already.
Oh, wait, we did that. Sorry. Next resolution, please.
Resolution 25-127 is a resolution authorizing payments of 537,256.82 to Huntington Bank as outlined in the development agreement for the Seward Road development, paid from the Seward Road TIP 2908. So this is the additional payment that we have to pay the developer for the development agreement that we entered into, I think, last year. So if that broke down, we received 737,079.57. We have to pay the schools 124,489.57. So we have to pay the developer 537,256.82. And then we will retain the remainder, which is 199,822.75.
I was gonna say, I think the remainder should only be 70,000. I was gonna say, I think the remainder should only be seventy thousand. Because we get the seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, we pay out five thirty-seven, then we pay one hundred and twenty-four, out leaves us seventy thousand. That's, that's what's left. So. So it's the difference between one ninety-nine and one twenty-four. So we retain around seventy thousand. So, sorry, seventy-five thousand. All but one, the due one, is the one we retain everything on. The first one, yes. Yeah, so that was the one hundred and ninety-nine thousand and then we had to pay the schools one hundred and twenty-four thousand of that. So that's the seventy-five. The other buildings, it all goes to the developer. For the agreement, toward the agreement. The Jed, yes. It's done much better, right, Chuck?
The uh delinquent individuals. I'll have to double check. I think they're, they may be a little behind. There was a pretty substantial catch-up towards, uh, I think it was in the first quarter of this year.
Well, I think my report said we have thirty-one thousand here to date, so.
Yeah, I think we got maybe fifteen or twenty thousand in one month.
One.
Uh, for a catch-up.
You should have, I'll double check though.
We can, we can reset it.
Yeah. Yeah. For Fairfield, you don't think you'd get them at all?
I, I don't remember seeing it. If you hear my voice, the last time we talked about this, they were sitting behind us.
Okay.
I know Larry's had conversations with the tax from um, and that's done for our litigation stage. But I'm pretty sure when we were talking about it last time, there was, it made towards collections and that was, you're getting the right direction.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one two seven.
Second?
Any further discussion? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Trustee McAfee.
That resolution is adopted. Committee reports, TID, trustee McAfee. Trustee Harkemeyer, EMA, OKI, and Cloud.
All right, so EMA, we met this afternoon. They did a rather extensive rundown on the uh exercises that they've done. They've done a lot of tabletops. They've done a lot of prep work. Uh, they've responded to multiple, multiple instance, incidents, um, some different hazmat things. They did help us with our Fairfield Township, this child that came up a few weeks or a while back. Um, one interesting thing of note is that they did a cybersecurity tabletop preparation event. And then a couple of days later, they actually responded to a cybersecurity incident. So I think that's the good thing that we need to know about EMA is that they are always thinking about what are the things that could go wrong and how do we come in and how do we mitigate those types of things? So, um, and it isn't just hazmat or tech rescue, but it goes all the way up to emergency treaties. So they are a very, very valuable resource here in Butler County. Um, responding to all kinds of different things that, that could come up. And I know you have a good working relationship with them and you've got them on speed, speed dial as at work or anything that uh comes up in Fairfield Township, as do all of our department. And so it's a good working relationship there. Um, I know there's been some concerns about the future of the EMA and uh TC Rogers was there at our meeting today and he just reported that they did hire a consultant to come in and to compare and look at what we have at EMA here at the township, participated in some of the interviews, made the review across the county to different groups to try and understand what the needs are. Um, so the consultant is gathering that information. They did mention that recommendations were coming soon. We were not provided with a date on that. Um, and then it will be up to the commissioners to make a decision on that. So that's, that's gonna be update on that particular thing. Um, OKI, we have not met. We do not meet in uh July and August, but we will be meeting on Thursday morning. So I might have something to report about that later. Um, Cloud, we did a, this is something we share. Thanks to, let's see, we had uh administrator Penzey, trustee Birding, and uh Mr. Bowen's all attended. Coalition of Large Urban Townships of Southwest Ohio. Um, we had sort of a workshop day over there where we talked about some of the problems that are facing townships and great solutions and solutions. This was very effective because we also invited a number of our state reps. Uh, we invited some state senators, so we had a lot of the, our state elected public officials that represent us in Columbus that attended this meeting. Um, Jennifer Gross was there and she does have a small section of Fairfield Township, so um that was good. And then there were some other reps from other areas in Southwest Ohio. And I think this was effective because there were, it was an opportunity for trustees and other staff to talk to those public officials about the problems that we're facing. So um this is a fact sheet that uh, we'll kind of pass this down. This is probably a good thing that you could put at the back of the room over there and copy some of, but uh just sort of a fact summary of Coalition of Southwest, of Cloud of Southwest Ohio, some of that cities and. So um if you did not receive the um, there was a summary email that went out, I believe, yesterday or today. So if you didn't receive that, you can reach out to Stone or Shelley, you that uh. And that is all I have.
I want to thank you for helping organize that event and sort of emcee the crowd participation. Uh, version of that, you did a wonderful job. I, I agree. I think uh a lot of good was done at that meeting. I think the, the state officials heard what, especially property tax, you know, what was going on with townships. Uh, some of the fears about getting rid of inside village and um uh replacement levees. So all, all these things were discussed and uh representatives and the senators, they were up there taking notes. I'm sure they're gonna have discussions. So that was, that was well thought out, well uh executed, some Cloud events. So congratulations to the team that did that. Okay, we'll move on to board member comments. Trustee McAfee?
Most likely in the next two to three weeks. I sure will, as soon as I know.
Anything else, trustee McAfee?
Like a Kiwanis pancake?
I was excited about pancake, but um still haven't seen the insurance or the association too big.
It, it has been requested, so I'll be checking to see where they are.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
I want to welcome First Watch to Fairfield Township. I think that is absolutely wonderful. Um, that's a great venue. I've loved going to First Watch for years and now we have one right here in the township. And um I think that there's uh probably some more pretty exciting businesses than coming into Fairfield Township rather soon too. So.
And so you know Chuck, Chuck and I were talking today about um Big Sandings. We think what the October-ish will be for their RIB cutting.
Exactly, yeah.
We'll let you know.
Mid to late October for RIB.
Yeah. We'll let you know when that gets scheduled. No, they didn't. We asked them and they.
I think the chamber went there on Sunday. Chamber members went there. Right. Yeah. And I was there yesterday morning, seven-thirty for breakfast. But I was expecting like an opening thing, but just come in and have breakfast. It was great. Beautiful on the inside. It's real nice. Beautiful.
So you get some pancakes there on Saturday morning before the, the car show.
Maybe that's some pancakes you heard about.
There you go.
Any other comments, uh, trustee Harkemeyer? I love this uh, under the, the uh report from the administrator, align item number three. New development, we met with Longhorn Steakhouse this past week. We're excited to announce they are working with Bridgewater Falls to acquire the old Mackenzie River building. They plan to tear it down, the old building, and build a new building in the same location. Their timetable will be, this is submit drawings by November and start construction in the spring of twenty-six.
This is huge news for Fairfield Township because if I have heard one thing more than anything else in the last one years, is that we want a steakhouse in Fairfield Township. So thank you, thank you to Longhorn Steakhouse. We look forward to having them here in our community and I want them to be booked out every single night with the steakhouse. This is fantastic news.
Yeah, like we go to the one in Westchester all the time and I was always telling them, hey, if you guys build a steakhouse Fairfield Township, let me tell you, that's all our residents want. I'm not claiming that I have any influence. I'm just saying that maybe they got sick of hearing me. I don't know. But that's, that's great. Congratulations.
That's big news.
So um, and I want to thank uh staff. Um, they really put in a lot of hard work. Both the fire department and internal staff to raise the money necessary. They have our event on, on Saturday. Again, it, it's something for the community to enjoy. Adults, they have something to enjoy. They're the taxpayers. It's great that we're able to put on an event. Businesses stepped up and individuals stepped up, sponsored the event. The township tax dollars did not have to go be spent towards this event. So very happy uh that they took the initiative or took the direction from us, but took the initiative to go out and find people, lock on some doors and make some phone calls. And thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that because it's gonna be a wonderful event again uh this year as it has been the past couple of years. Definitely looking forward to that event on Saturday. I even gave away my soccer tickets to come to the event. That's how I'm looking for it. They're playing Nashville, so big game, but uh definitely looking forward to that. I'm excited to. Yeah, I heard the music is like Nashville girl is like drawing crowds, so that's gonna be excellent. Uh, again, thank you staff for all your efforts. So at this time, uh, I think that, oh wait, announcements? So Patrick's Day is Saturday, September thirteenth at nine AM to nine PM. There's a zoning appeals meeting on Thursday, September twenty-fifth at seven PM, right here at the Township Administration Building. Regular trustee meeting is uh Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven PM at the Township Administration Building. Uh, were we planning on a Veterans Day parade this year? Is that?
I have to begin and talk on it.
Okay.
We have that to be Veterans Day test question.
Okay. All right. So we need to talk about that. Okay, fantastic. At this time, I move uh to go into executive session pursuant to ORC one twenty-one point twenty-two G one. Consider the discipline, appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? I don't anticipate action to follow executive session, but there may be. Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding.
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Yes.
Trustee McAfee.
Yeah. And that motion passes. We uh, we will go to executive session at nine oh five PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight and we will sign an agenda for you to take home as a souvenir. How about that? Thank you for being here tonight.